Called me into order. I invite you to join with me in the invocation. Dear Lord, you have shown us to respect and love others in our actions and decisions. Let us follow your direction in leading our community. Help us to make the best decisions for our future. Show us compassion for those less fortunate. Lord, we ask for your love and safety for our children and families this summer at home and in their travels. Protect our employees and keep them safe while doing difficult jobs. Lord, we trust in you and ask your blessings for all and us to thy service.
Amen.
Moving what is listed as a special presentation, council, I ask you to adopt the proclamation for Shirley, Diffy, Louder, and I'm not going to read it because we're actually going to bring them in and read it and present it later. So move.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Dry. Second by Councilmember Hall. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Council, next is approval of minutes. Approval of minutes for Monday, May the 5th, closed session, consult with attorney in real estate. Tuesday, May the 13th, special work session. And Monday, May the 19th, regular session.
Motion by Councilmember Hall to approve.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Townsend, further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Next is the public hearing on the budget, and before we start, I will make a few comments. Council starts the process to develop our budget in the fall, and this year again, as we have for several years, we held our strategic planning session. In that, it includes citizen surveys, so we have input from our community. Consistently, our priorities every year have been, number one, roads. This year's budget has 1.3 million in this budget to do road maintenance. Public safety is always a high priority. This year, we have 10 new firefighters in the grant in this budget from a grant in conjunction with a grant from the Safer. We also have vehicle cameras for police patrol vehicles. Equipment includes police vehicles, a new ladder truck for the fire department, dump trucks, mowers, a mini excavator, roof replacement, HVAC replacement, a fire station upgrade, and required computer and software. Our personnel has been a problem for some time as we've become a training ground only to lose our employees after we get them trained. We have been working on changing our policy on paying our employees for the last three years. We started doing salary adjustments after having salary surveys conducted. Three years, and this is the third year, we do one-third employees each year. Also, we will have a cost of living of 3% and a merit of anywhere from 0 to 3% depending on their evaluation. Health this year, health insurance this year has a major impact on the budget with a 35% increase. Also, we have a required local government retirement contribution increases. There were many major cuts to the budget to get it to 61 cents. Initially, council had discussions of a higher rate, but directed our city manager to try to get it where we could keep it at our current 61 rate. 61 cents per 100 is what's recommended in the budget. If you have an average parcel in the city, it's considered 254, 452 value by the county. That's an increase of $279.89 a year or $23 a month. If you have commercial property, the average is 525,000, which is a $577 increase per year or $48 per month. Again, this is a public hearing. Anyone who cares to speak, please come forward, and I have Richie Hearn signed up to speak. 2213 Snugs Park Road, Albemarle, and you have three minutes, Mr. Hearn.
Mr. Mayor, Manager, and Council, my name is Richie Hearn. I have reviewed the proposed FY '26 city budget with several concerns that I feel are very important. First of all, I do not recall or find any historical information to show that the city property tax was retained at the existing rate when countywide valuations are implemented. In fact, I don't recall any previous cycle where the valuations have increased by an average of 30% or more as they have in this current revaluation. Therefore, I feel it is necessary to remind the public that under the proposed city budget, if the value of your home or other property increases by 30%, then your city tax is going to increase by 30%. I have concerns considering that with the current evaluations, Stanley County has adjusted and proposed to lower its current tax rate from 61 cents to revenue neutral 51 cents. Likewise, the city of Locust is proposing to lower its rate from 36 cents to 29 cents. What is going on in Albemarle that we can't make some similar adjustment? The city's proposal to maintain a 61-cent tax rate is nowhere near the revenue neutral rate of 50 cents. 61 cents in this case is really revenue overdrive. Every extra penny on the municipal tax rate will generate approximately $200,000 yearly. An extra 11 cents on the rate will generate 2.2 million more tax dollars annually. There's no doubt that health insurance and other benefits have increased dramatically and is necessary to take care of the city's best asset, its employees. There's no doubt a need to increase the general fund to address raises and to retain valued employees. But this budget as proposed is full of fluff. It is not reasonable to expect taxpayers of Albemarle to fund a wish list of stuff when we are already being hit with significant inflation from the last five years. As an example, the very first item on the manager's list is a ladder truck costing $2.5 million. Just a few years ago, that same truck cost $1.5 million. My question is, what were we doing when we refurbished ladder truck number 11 less than two years ago? Is this new truck a replacement for that one? And the wish list goes on with dump trucks, mowers, HVAC replacements, et cetera. My continued concern that I've expressed on multiple occasions is that the city cannot maintain financial equilibrium with all the proposed residential development currently on the books. I dealt with this problem when I was the NC DOT District Engineer in Union County 25 years ago. Municipalities there could not keep up with construction and maintenance of infrastructure, schools, water, sewer, and roads with all the out-of-control development that was occurring. I don't think the city of Albemarle is giving adequate consideration to the future drain on the current infrastructure, streets, police, and fire staffing if you don't require the proposed developments to pay some sort of impact fee or other to assist in that direction.
Mr. Hearn, please, your time's over.
My recommendation to council is to roll back this stiff property tax increase proposed and wait for another year when the economy shows sustained improvement. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have no one else signed up to speak. Is anyone else here to speak? Council, what do you want to do with the public hearing?
Move the public hearing be closed.
Motion by Councilmember Hall to close the public hearing. Second by Councilmember Dry, further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
Your Honor, Mayor, I would like to make a statement before anything else is done.
Yes, ma'am.
Since the public hearing is closed. Tonight, as I came down the hill beside the hospital on Hawthorne to go to come here, I saw what I believe was at least six different fire department vehicles from different departments parked at the commons. Part of what the county does is it sets fire rates for fire departments in the county. Albemarle is the only city-funded fire department in the county. And I just remember, when I was a county commissioner, I didn't know a whole lot then, and I wondered why the fire departments, why the county was setting their rate. Upon getting here tonight, I inquired what the average rate of a fire, of the fire current rate, not proposed, but current rate in the county is. And that is between 7 and 15 cents. So, stop for just a minute, and we cannot be compared, in my opinion, as a city to the county, because there is a whole different set of services that the county offers and that the city offers. The county, for the most part, takes state funds and federal funds and distributes those, and then with their taxed assessed value on each of our properties, that goes then for countywide services, whether you live in a city or not in a city. So we really can't compare ourselves with the county. We're paying county taxes as well. But back it back down to what the city offers. If we were to look at a 7 to 15 cents tax rate for fire service, then take that off the top, take it at 7, and we've really just got a 4 cent increase. We were to take it that we were doing 15 cents, then we are below revenue neutral if we were to look at how much it costs to fund our fire departments. Now, I want to look at the fire department for just a moment. I know that our rate, our insurance rate right now is great, and I would dare not say, and I shouldn't throw this on you, so I won't throw it on you, but I would dare not say to ask the fire chief if our insurance rating is one of the best in the county of all of the departments that are out there because of the manpower. So with all of that said, I think that we cannot be ignorant to the idea that that is one of the things that we provide to our citizens that in a municipality that no other municipality actually does. Okay? We're the only paid fire department in the county. And I will, that's the only thing I want to say at this point.
Further comments or questions?
Mayor, I'd like to add something to that. I would remind Councilman Hall that residents of the city already pay 61 cents more than county residents in taxes.
I understand that, because we are county residents as well as city residents.
Further questions or comments? Council, what do you want to do?
Mayor, I think we sometimes have to take a step back to see what the future has in hold for us. When we started this process, my concern was that we did not, we should not do anything that would negate the opportunities of our employees. I did not want any cuts there at all, and I think the manager has done a very good job in pulling that piece together. Folks, the most important resource we have are our people, and that means the citizens as well as those that work for you in the city. I wouldn't want to work the hours that they do in the elements that they do. The mayor and I were out at the ballpark, what day was it, Thursday?
I was there as well.
And.
Friday morning.
And trying to get the field ready to play, and as we got going, another storm rolled through, so we had to quit, so. But they had that field ready to play for Saturday night. A lot of things go on that I took for granted before I took this seat, and you don't underst- it's hard to fathom the dollar sign that you see with regard to what our people do for that number to keep it as well as it is. Quite honestly, we probably ought to be at 64 cents today. You know, people have said to me that, you know, that's really getting out of line. But again, if we funded everything that this community would need to be substantial in what the community needs, our citizens need, we'd be a lot more than where we are. So I congratulate the manager on the diligence that has been put into this process. It's, it'll make your hair a little grayer than what it was when you started, but that's just a few of the comments that I wanted to make.
Mayor, I'd like to place a motion on the table that we approve ordinance 2516, budget ordinance, which includes the total, the budget as presented that is in front of us today for which the public hearing has been correctly and officially published.
I have a motion by Councilmember Hall to approve budget ordinance 2516.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Dry, further discussion? All those in favor?
Well, Mayor, I have a, I'd like to move an amendment to the motion that instead of the rate being 61 cents, that it be 55 cents, and that the city manager be commissioned to adjust elements of the budget to bring it in line with a 55% 55 cent assessment instead of the 61.
Okay, council, you've heard the motion?
As amended?
To amend the, to amend the motion.
Yes, sir.
Have a motion to amend the motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
I have a second. Further discussion? All those in favor of the motion that Mr. Bramlett proposed, raise your hand. Three, those opposed? Four, motion down. Now we go back to the first motion to approve budget ordinance 2516. All those in favor, raise your hand. Four, those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. I have no one else signed up for any public comments. I'll move on down to the consent agenda, which is for bank loan bids for the solid waste collection equipment, two leaf trucks and two loader trucks which are here. This is to finance those. Low bid is Pinnacle Bank. Motion by Councilmember Townsend to approve the bid, low bid of Pinnacle, from Pinnacle Bank. Second by Councilmember Whitley, further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Moving down to the city manager report.
Thank you, Mayor. On my notes here, several things to bring to your attention, Mayor and council. First, want to thank our police chief and his staff. They were actually in Raleigh last Friday and participated in the torch run for Special Olympics. He had eight members of his staff who participated in a 5.7 mile run from Carter-Fenley Stadium to the Capitol Building. And so, Chief, thank you and your staff for representing City of Albemarle in that worthy cause. With fire department, just want to let you know that we have hired eight new recruits. Their start date is June 13th, and they will start recruit training school on June 16th, and they will not actually be in service until they complete school, which lasts approximately 14 weeks. As far as fire apparatus, all vehicles are in service. We are, however, waiting on a UL test on our ladder truck, and until that is completed, the truck is being used simply as an engine rather than a ladder truck, but it is in service. With recreation, our resurfacing of our pickleball courts were scheduled for last week due to weather that was delayed, and we are looking for a start date for either Thursday or Friday of this week. Also with recreation, the Master Parks and Recreation Plan was presented at your last council meeting. The plan in its entirety was forwarded to city council for your review and further consideration, and we are planning to put that on your June 16th agenda for adoption. So look for that at our next meeting. With economic development, Lindsay reports that Retail Strategies has been contacted, and they are scheduled to give their annual report to city council at the July 21st meeting. I know that was a question that was raised at the last meeting, is if we could get a report. So please look for that in July. Speaking on behalf of Lindsay and Katie, they want to express their thanks for everyone who volunteered this past weekend for the Summertime Sip Festival. I think we had a good turnout, and Katie did a great job organizing everything. So thank you to everyone involved with that. Public Works, our paving contract and paving projects continue. We'll make it a comment, Mayor and council, on the Raffetella Study for Sanitation and Recycling Services. We would like to get some feedback from city council as to what your discretion is on moving forward with the results from that study and the recommendations. We will need to make some decisions moving forward in the coming months.
Question on that. So the budget that we just, that we just approved shows no changes or anything compared. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
The council essentially just made the decision not to do anything with the Public Works sanitation recycling services this year. We would continue with waste management, but you will have to visit that again the next budget year to decide if you want to do anything.
Well, and my, my recommendation is, is that we do, as soon as possible, get a, get another group together with Ross and with the manager and have a sit-down again with, with waste management, or, or we need to decide if we're going to go out again, because we've just got another year on that. Isn't that right? We just got through 26, through June 30th of 26.
But the contract will automatically renew.
For two years?
I think it's open-ended until we give notice that we're going, or they give notice that we're.
That's correct, and also 60 days notice in the renewals aren't limited to only two. So council, if you need additional time, if waste management agrees, you can continue to renew until the city is ready to make a different decision other than waste management.
Right, thank you.
Further?
With public utilities, just want to note that we did conduct interviews for public utilities director last Friday. We had four candidates that were interviewed, and we are in the process of assessing those, and we'll be making an offer. Also, our AMI project, just to note, as a reminder, we will begin that project. Brian Lee, the note that I had was to kick off on June 16th, and David Fath is doing a great job putting information together in our utility billing, information that will go out just as an information packet of what's going to happen and answering perhaps some questions the public might have. Mayor, council, that concludes my report.
Anything else to come before council?
Just a follow-up with the water, with the, with the flood. Is there anything that anybody can give us on that? I know that our mobile bathrooms got messed. There's, you know, any, anything that we can know about with the flood?
The mobile bathrooms. The mobile bathrooms will have to be evaluated, but anticipated to be down for some time.
Lisa, if you'll come forward, please.
Thank you, Lisa.
Oh, she's hiding back there.
No, she wasn't hiding.
Good evening. So the bathrooms, I think are going to be okay. We went and checked them out today. They were in the, at the warehouse in one of the bays all weekend, had fans on it, drying out. So Todd and myself went to check it out this morning as well as Chris Vigara, and he put the humidifier or the humidity detector. I know Benton, you know what that is. I don't know what the actual tool was called. But anyway, Friday, it was in the 90s. Today, it was in the 40s. The floor did not swell or buckle or anything like that. So we're going to leave it there through tomorrow, bring it back to Parks and Rec at Niven on Wednesday, hook it up to make sure everything electrical is working. And if it is, then we'll clean it up and then hopefully we'll be able to even use it on Friday.
That's, that's great news.
It is very good news. It was.
Before, it was not going to be usable. Thank you.
It was a very good Monday bit of sunshine.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything?
Mayor, I, I want to make just one comment. I want it on record that probably this council just approved the highest tax increase in the history of Albemarle. End comment.
Two things, Your Honor. One, June the 7th, we have the annual Grill Master Showdown over at the E.D. Waddell Center. Dexter, probably sitting over there saying, well, I, I don't want to say anything about it, but he does a great job putting this thing together. If you like some good barbecue, please come out. It's $20 at the door. The weather's usually pretty good. It's usually pretty warm, so everything tastes good, good cold beverages without the other part of the beverage thing being served. And secondly, the, this past Saturday, we had the, the wine, the summer wine sip. I want to be honest, after last year, I had a concern as to how well this thing was going to go. For years, we were downtown at, at the, at the market station. We had some difficulties last year, but the A.D., DC did a fabulous job of planning, executing, and laying this thing out superbly. Heard a lot of negativity last year. This year, it was totally reversed. A lot of folks said, we, thank you for doing what you did. You know, we don't do it. It's the, these ladies out here and a few guys that, that are on that committee that made this thing the success it is. Thank y'all very much. It's a, it's a wonderful thing that we do, and we need to have it as a positive thing for our city. Thank you so much.
I will entertain a motion that would go into closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143, 31811A, 5 and 6, to consult with the attorney and personnel.
So may.
Motion by Councilmember Hall. Second by Councilmember Townsend. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?